All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at, we're good Wendy?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. The Dunsmere City Council. We could, uh, Councilman Lucchese, you lead us in the flag.
Roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready for roll call? Okay, Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Luccezi.
Present.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Councilmember Deusch.
Here.
And Mayor Bryan.
Present.
I have three special presentations and announcements. I do believe we have a quick announcement from our city manager. Although, most of us know the news. Todd?
He is still muted.
This is the part where he just says psych, right?
Okay, so I don't know if you heard, or, but I just was unmuted. I didn't know if you heard anything that I said.
No.
No, sorry.
So, um, I, you know, it's, um, it was a hard decision, but I put in notice um, with the city of Dunsmere and taking a new city manager job and have made some very close friends here and care deeply about this community and want to make sure that we have a very smooth transition to interim and trying to give as much notice I, as I possibly can. And I just want to thank council and the community for allowing me to, um, serve over the last two years. It's, uh, it's been, uh, been, you know, it's, it's been an honor and a pleasure.
Right, uh, thank you. Todd, we really appreciate that and we appreciate your two years of service and we're thankful that you're committed to a graceful transition. Let's move forward to public comment, general public comment for this evening. That's the opportunity for any member of the public who want to, uh, comment on an item not on the agenda. So an item that's either general or on the consent agenda, come up to the podium and you'll be allowed three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand in the participants tab. Good evening, Mr. Holt.
Hi, yeah, Tim Holt, 6235 Hill Street. Uh, like many people in this town, I was very disappointed to learn that our city manager is leaving his post. So I have, on that note, I have two very brief messages, um, for him and for the council. I believe the current city manager has been committed to getting our vacant commercial buildings occupied so that we can have a more vibrant and prosperous town. So I would urge him, before he leaves, to implement the next step in that process, to implement section 9.14.05 of the Abandoned and Distressed Real Property Ordinance adopted by the city about two years ago, and that reads basically, "The owner of any abandoned or distressed commercial property shall provide access to the city to conduct an exterior and interior inspection of the building or structure to determine compliance with the municipal code." So my understanding through second and third-hand information is that that part of the ordinance is just about to be implemented. So I am urging Mr. Duhaas, wherever you are out there in, uh, space to, uh, to implement it before you leave your post. Uh, now, a message to this city council at this point. I urge the council to make the continued enforcement of this vacant building ordinance a top priority for the new city manager, whoever he or she is. It's been a long struggle getting up that hill, Dunsmere. We just need another push or two to get on over to the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Is there any further public comment this evening? Mr. Bush?
Michael Bush, Butterfly Avenue. On October 19th, the, uh, or rather, August 19th, the council passed a resolution strongly encouraging, uh, the timber companies to relocate Road NC4 on the other side of the summit, relocate it on the other side. Uh, it was unanimously passed and, um, it was sent down to Cal Fire and it was sent to, uh, they forwarded it to the timber companies. And so I wanted to know if, uh, Todd or anyone has had any response from, uh, Cal Fire or the timber company on the resolution? Or if, uh, Todd or someone has contacted them. So I kind of know the status of it. The town kind of knows the status of it. And also, uh, since Todd is leaving, uh, I, uh, I, on another subject, I strongly encourage the city council to, if they can, to find somebody to step into the position of a city manager who has some experience in the area. Uh, every time we change city managers, I always say the same thing. I'm hoping it's someone that doesn't come in here blind because wow, there are so many issues. You guys know how complicated they are. So if there is somebody who knows more about it, I think that should be a plus on their side. Uh, that's very important. It's so complicated for somebody just to step into this. So maybe Todd could comment on the Blackberry Hill thing, or somebody else could.
Yeah.
Todd, we could wait till we're done with the general public comment and then we'll respond. Thank you. All right, is there any further general public comment this evening?
I don't see anybody on Zoom with their hand up.
Okay, um, seeing none, I'll now close general public comment for this evening. Uh, Todd, please feel free to respond.
So no response, um, from either the, the timber company or our contact. And I, I have a call into the timber company and I've heard nothing in response.
Okay, thank you. Let's move forward to council and staff comments. Uh, let's begin with city manager.
So, um, we've got a number of things going on. We, this week, a couple days ago, got approval from, um, Union Pacific for our second set of drawings that we submitted for the Mossbury Falls Trail.
Hey!
And, um, that's great news. The, um, the caveat is before they'll sign and stamp drawings, they want to make a site visit out to look at constructability. They want to look at the fence, just what the site conditions are on the ground, just so they understand what they're getting themselves into. Um, but that's, that I see, um, stuff that Tom has already worked out. I talked with him. So this, this is on its way. And, uh, the next step goes into negotiations. So another piece of news is we've had, um, you know, uh, let's say, you know, and, um, Juliana can attest to this, we've had some kind of fits and starts with state parks as it concerns our Prop 68 grant and the children's park and, um, they're, you know, they've been a little slow to review our work. Finally, I got approval, uh, this morning to, uh, go ahead and purchase the underlying property and, um, have gotten verbal and, um, have proof that, uh, state parks will then reimburse us for the cost of purchasing that land.
So, so we're gonna own our park finally?
Yeah.
Good work.
Um, so another piece of this, and I would bring it back to council, is the stimulus that we've received. If you, uh, remember, we're getting just under $400,000 in two tran- tranches of funds. $187,000 and change the first year, $187,000 and change the second year. And, um, there are, you know, pretty specific limits on how that money can be used. One thing that we found that we can use it for is for, to pay for law enforcement, for fire, and for code enforcement. And, um, what that, what that does is it frees up a little space in our general fund. So what I would like to do is come back with three. Is one, um, uh, I'm getting estimates right now for re-roofing the library uh, because, you know, it's, it's really in shoddy shape and if we don't fix it, we're gonna have a much bigger expense. The second is I have a list from Stephen Bryant about what additional cost and that he incurred during the heart of COVID, and I want to make him whole with what he had to put out, um, during that time. And then finally, um, is we have gotten quotes on putting in mini splits in the police substation as well as in council chambers and would like to pick that off, um, when we can.
Question. Yes.
Todd, um, on the, uh, money that we can put in towards police and fire, what is the, uh, equation on that? I'm sure we can't just pay for the whole thing, so what, what math comes to play there?
So we have, uh, we're still working out the details of how that mechanism would work, but, um, you know, I don't know, Blake, if you want to add a little more, cause he, a little more information, because you've dug into it a little bit deeper after, after we, uh, we talked about this.
Uh, yeah, sure. It'll, it'll, it'll work out, uh, fine, but we'll get, delve into the details when it comes back.
Thanks. But there's $187,000 there.
We, we received $180,000, $87,000 right now and it'll be next year.
One question, it can't be spent in more than just the two years received.
Yeah. There is a grant period that you are able to spend funds further than
Two years.
Two years.
If we could, do you know what it is?
Twenty twenty six.
I think it's five years.
Twenty twenty seventy to seven.
Okay.
Twenty twenty six.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we could, we should probably divide that up over five potentially and well, I'd just like to remind everyone, as we're doing this, since we can use it for law enforcement, uh, we are likely going to face a steep line, law enforcement increase, uh, July 1 of this coming year.
But that is not before us yet, so we'll discuss it.
And he, and to reiterate, he said that Mossbury Falls got approved and they're
Just the plans.
Just the plans, but hey, that's the biggest start. You guys realize it's been sixty-seven years since we started trying to do this, so, good job, good job.
Uh, city manager, do you have more?
Uh, well.
Come on, you're on a roll.
Well, I'd love to give you more, um, uh, yeah, um, you know, smaller initiatives. I can't think of them off the bat. Oh, one of the things that we're gonna have to get into, when there have been communications behind the scene, is, uh, uh, Parks is trying to put in a Prop 68 grant request and to do that, they need a current contract with the city. And so it's out of date by about three years. I could, um, end up, uh, you know, extending that contract or allow them to apply, but, um, there are some behind the scenes issues that I think we need to address first, but looking for some direction kind of offline.
All right, uh, thank you, Todd. And then it came to my attention that, um, some of the councillors want to know an update on Butterfly Bridge.
Butterfly Bridge, I reviewed thirty percent plans this week and we're on track. Um, everything's going, uh, you know, really well.
All right, thank you. Finance Director?
All right, thank you guys. Um, first update, uh, regarding CDBG grants. Uh, so there are two programs out there. Just want to make sure everybody is extremely clear on what, um, what is out there. So for both the programs, there is a Dunsmere microeconomic program and a coronavirus microeconomic, micro enterprise program. So please, if you know anybody that is a micro enterprise, so I can get into details and I just have them call me, but I really just want to specify that anybody you know, please talk to any micro enterprise out there. Tell them to get an application in, some talk to me. I will refer them to Quinton at the Siski, Siskiyou Economic Development Council. Um, but they are active, they're ready to go. We, we have funds. We've already distributed some funds to, um, coronavirus grantees.
What type of funding is available for a grant, as an example, to encourage people?
About for artists, for instance, you know, craft people?
Do, yeah, you can use it on purchasing equipment. You can use it on art supply, sure. Use it on, use it on a micro enterprise and, uh, reason.
Uh, I've been talking to Quinton and if you know anyone who is interested in knowing more, Quinton and I are working on, uh, Councilmember Art had requested a business meeting to kind of talk about this.
That's a good idea.
But Quinton in, and I are working on a format for people, so if people are interested in information to still contact Blake, whether they know if they're in enterprise or not, or if they have an idea, um, to get in touch with him and to also maybe see what kind of format would work best for them. Um, because obviously Quinton and I want to pick like a day that works for people, if people want to do Zoom or if people want something in person or want to do like, uh, we even threw out the idea of scheduling ten or fifteen minute blocks of time for people so that they can just come meet with him one-on-one to talk about the program. So we're hopefully going to be able to, you know, address some of the concerns Peter brought up previously of people who are trying to navigate the system and not sure what is eligible and what isn't, or who is eligible and who isn't.
Well, and to be clear, we just got the full award letter for the micro enterprise loan portion. So now we're, everything we've been working on except for the planning grant and CDBG is finally here and eligible. You could, could fund any applications.
Yeah.
This is the way they're, they're actually trying to give stepping stones, right?
Yeah, and if someone has something that isn't eligible, we can maybe look at if there's some options or other funds that SEDC manages, because they do manage a number of other different types of funding that could be, they could be more eligible for, um, for their different ideas.
It sounds like something that would really be great if the paper could give out a lot of word on this and explain what micro enterprises are and about the program. Any way we can get the word out to help our citizens find a way to be, uh, more sufficient.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is if people are interested in learning more to get in touch with Blake or myself or Quinton on what type of format works best for people, because like I said, we don't know. You know, we don't want to have an event at, you know, two in the afternoon on a Wednesday where most people can't meet that. So, um, we are trying to go around and see different types of businesses, what would work for them in terms of day of the week, if it's just an online thing, um, you know, we can do that.
That's cool.
Yes.
Very cool.
I thought I saw a hand up, but maybe not.
Sorry.
Good to go. All right, yes, so essentially, if you are a for-profit business within the city limits of Dunsmere, talk to me, talk to Quinton, talk to Juliana. There are guidelines and restrictions and stuff, but please just, if you're a for-profit business, just come talk to us. Okay, second thing, um, shut-offs are gonna start happening again. The moratorium the governor enacted will be lifted. So just please be aware of that. Water shut-offs will be, um, be reinforced. Uh, then lastly, uh, for the past, uh, two consecutive weeks, there's been some disgruntled, uh, people coming into staff, coming in and being unpleasant toward city staff. So I'm just gonna make a plea out there. If you know of anybody that is disgruntled, just tell them to not be unpleasant to our front office staff. Just direct them to me. Uh, they can call me on the phone, they can meet in my office, uh, whatever they need to be, just direct them to me if they're, if you know they're gonna be unpleasant, direct them to me. Uh, please just have front office staff be, be cordial, uh, be pleasant, please. Uh, they are doing their best. And that's my last announcement.
Stop yelling at the ladies, is what you're saying.
Don't be a jerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm just, uh, concerned about the news I'm hearing right now with regards to COVID. Um, we have, uh, word out of Wyrica that they're running short on oxygen now. They're using like eight times as much oxygen as they were before. Um, and, uh, I know that Idaho, the whole state of Idaho now is in, um, care rationing because they're overwhelmed. This area up here, um, I was just up in Medford and, um, it's scary just to be there, knowing how prevalent it is up there. So I'm hoping that everybody, um, takes it seriously going forward. I also want to point out, I guess this would be under, uh, committee reports, but I'll just say right now that we're waiting for the, uh, for Paul Ruder to get back off of an extended leave where he's been out of contact to figure out when we're gonna have our town hall. And once we have that date, we'll bring it back to everybody, so that's
We're gonna set it tentatively for the Thursday in between the council meetings in October, so tentatively.
That's all I have, sir.
And if I could add something to this, if, um, if I may, about, um, COVID, uh, just to put things in perspective, Shasta County, yeah, if you compare all counties in California, has the highest transmission rate of any county in the state. Siskiyou County is number two. The county just over the border, uh, has, uh, the highest, um, transmission rates of any county in the nation. In, uh, Reading, they, yeah, still, if you've been vaccinated, you're, you're most likely to get off with, um, you know, either be asymptomatic and moderate, moderate symptoms, but I would just add that in Reading, ten percent of the ICU beds are filled with people that have been vaccinated um, and are on ventilators. So not, just, just be careful.
Thank you. Councilman Kaisler?
I seen today, a couple things, I seen today, uh, that it was a pretty slim pickings at the farmer's market. Um, I want to remind people that it's on Thursdays, come out and support. I don't know how many more Thursdays.
I think it's the last one.
Was it the last one?
Just for Julia's food stand, I think there're gonna be at least two more.
Okay, I thought there today was the last.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, uh, remind everybody, you know, come out and support local, those are local people. And then I would like, if I might, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read a statement. As you all are aware, I've been working with the people that are doing the movie, the production company, and it's, it's been an honor to work with. They're really professional. Of course, I never done too much of it, but from what I saw, these guys were top-notch. What they got done in a day was amazing. And when they were gone, it's like they were never there. I've had a chance to view some of the, some of the movie and, oh my God, I can't wait till it comes out. So, with that being said, this letter says, here you are, sir. And he asked me to give this, relay this message to the people of Dunsmere.
Lucy?
This, this is John, the producer, um, John Lurchin. The Peter Five A Film Crew wants to truly thank the town of Dunsmere for supporting our adventure in making this movie. The local businesses have been saviors at times and the entire crew has made local friends and experiences that they will take back with them. The water, the nature, and the warm welcome will always have us wanting to shoot another film here. Thank you, Dunsmere. So, um, tomorrow's the last day of shooting and then they'll be taking off on, on Mon, Sunday. And come Monday, it's, you know, back to painting drywall for me, but, but, uh, uh, I do want to thank everybody that came out and helped them do this. I want to thank the businesses, the churches, the, everybody involved, from my city manager to council, to the people. It was pretty cool and I truly believe that when this film comes out, Dunsmere is gonna be seen in a really cool light, because, um, just gotta wait till the movie comes out, I'm telling you.
Dave, though, I, I heard they, they, they shot our mayor.
Yeah, yeah. By the way, this is the first mayor that's ever been assassinated in, in the town of Dunsmere. And he got paid to do it, so, um, thank you, sir, and thank you, Dunsmere.
Thank you, Councilman Kaisler. Uh, council?
One more thing. Todd? I'm being nice. Uh, I'm mad, you know, my feelings, uh, I'm hurt, but I want to thank you for getting to know you. You're a hell of a dude. I know you've been to the wringer personally with some shit late, stuff lately. But I'll tell you, I think council would concur. You've been one of the best. And thank you for having Dunsmere heart. I miss you, dude. Write careful.
Thank you, Councilman Kaisler. Councilman Lucchese?
I had a bunch of stuff and then my brain just kind of reset. I already gave the update about the business meeting. Um, I've been working with Todd on the Prop 68 per capita, which it's great that we finally have to go ahead to purchase that. Just to remind people, the Prop 68 will also pay for a complete replacement of the existing structure, uh, make it ADA compliant. And then the one nice thing we did find out is we weren't asking for enough money. Um, so Prop 68, um, Lydia, our, uh, helper with them, uh, helped us get some additional, uh, equipment, which will be added on to that, which is really nice. Um, and then we also have a small budget for landscaping as well, which will be delightful. On top of that, uh, we'll be working on, moving forward, uh, John Harch with the Mount Chastor Trails Association is getting a group of volunteers together to do some cleanup of the areas where they're gonna be proposing the Mossbury Trail to be able to open that up and give, uh, UP's reps an idea of the area. So if you are interested in volunteering, please contact the Mount Chastor Trails Association. It would be just kind of cleanup work um, in terms of vegetation, uh, just to get that ready to go for viewing. Um, and then we're hopefully gonna have, uh, the Department of Fish and Wildlife on site as well with Union Pacific, um, so that we can move through the next stage of the environmental review, which will be done, which will be good and needs to get done. Uh, there is a grant that I'm gonna be putting together that's due in February, so if we do happen to get through and get the environmental completed and a lease by February, there's a good chance that we would be able to get a grant that would cover eighty-eight percent of the cost associated with construction. Uh, so that's the next goal. We, uh, have set a tentative date for, I believe, October eighth, I believe, uh, for the Christmas tree planting, which actually is gonna turn out really well, because it's the day before, um, one of the granddaughter's weddings. Um, so they're gonna make it part of the festivities, uh, but that's just tentative at this point. Um, I'll let you guys know if you would like to come and assist with that.
Absolutely.
I, you know, I think it's gonna be the second Friday in Octo, or the first Friday in October, second Friday in October. But we'll put that out when we have a definitive date there. I think that is it for now. Oh, there's also a grant opening up for, uh, asbestos removal that I will probably get in contact with Blake about, because I know that we can't use the downstairs of this building, so.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Juliana, um, how would a person go about, if they wanted to help out, how would they go about getting ahold of the Trails Association?
Uh, they do have a website, which I would recommend going to. I don't happen to have their volunteer list.
I'm hoping that Ms. Shereen, when you put this in the paper, that you could add whatever they need so that they could, you know, a phone number, a
They have a volunteer sign-up on their website. I know is the best way to get ahold of them.
Just hoping that she could put that in the paper so that everybody could be aware of how to get ahold of them. They do good work. We just, and we need volunteers, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
By now, it's just me and you.
And that's it.
Right, thanks. Uh, Councilman Art?
Uh, I really have, uh, nothing other than I had my hand up to say as far as the micro enterprise loans, most of my for-profit tenants in Dunsmere are the very essence of micro enterprises. And at this point, we're zero for four. When we go and get ahold of Quinton for some reason or another, at least as far as the coronavirus program, nobody seems to be eligible. So I do think it would be of great assistance to the small businesses. POPS in particular, I don't understand why POPS isn't eligible. They lost an entire season to coronavirus. But I hope this But I hope the city and the county step up. If there's aid to be given, what are the criteria? What does it take? But some people spent a fair amount of time and came up with nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harch.
On that point, I just was thinking, since they're a nonprofit, wouldn't they fit into the same realm we're talking about when it comes to the resource center?
POPS is not a nonprofit.
Well, we didn't plan it that way.
I learned something there. That was good, that was good.
Good, good thinking. All right, let's move forward to the approval of the minutes.
Committee reports.
Committee reports, sorry.
Okay. I just want to make people aware that we're going to have a solid waste ad hoc meeting on September 21st at 2:00 PM. I believe we'll have a Zoom link. I don't know if we're going to be meeting in person or not. I won't be able to meet in person, but we will have our first meeting there. And then I did read the DPAC minutes for August and have a quick update from them. They do a COVID number update at each of their meetings and discuss some of the issues with that. Brian Shirley works for Mercy Medical, and so he's got really good up-to-date information on that. So if people are interested in staying connected with that conversation, to definitely tune into their September meeting, which I believe is next Thursday. They were not granted the CAL FIRE Fire Prevention Grant, which is unfortunate, but they made a really good connection with the McConnell Foundation, who has submitted a notice of intent for funding and is going to still try and get that grant or pieces of that grant funded through another financial means, which it's really nice, the McConnell Foundation is going to be doing the application for us, which is super helpful with staff resources and funding. So we are going to repivot that grant to a different cycle and try and get that fire prevention project done. Linda Scheiben went to the Cooling Center and they talked about some of the issues with the building in terms of insulation, if we were going to do a cooling or heating center in the future. They did an overview of their Green Waste Day. They are talking about a hazard mitigation grant that we are now eligible for because we have a local hazard mitigation plan. And they're talking about two separate projects. They're only allowed to submit one, but they're looking at either updating our two horn evacuation system that you hear go off at about noon, upgrading that to a better system. And then they're also looking at doing fire station upgrades, looking at relocation options, looking at refurbishing and updating the building as well. So they're looking at a full suite of options, also looking at power backup for the station. So it's a pretty decent sized grant. They're looking at a lot of those options. If you're interested in any of their future agenda items, they're going to be doing a discussion on the antelope fire and some of the issues that people evacuating for the antelope fire experience and trying to look at some lessons learned for antelope. They're going to also talk about the green waste program again. Mike Delabana is on the Solid Waste Ad hoc Committee, which is going to be really helpful for coordinating that event now in the future. And then they're going to be talking about the emergency warning horn as well as emergency warning systems at their next, or at a future meeting. So that's an update from them. Were you able to attend finance?
No.
Okay. Did we not have quorum?
Didn't have quorum.
Okay, we did not have a quorum for finance. I apologize, I was not able to get away.
I'll give.
Quorum broke, doesn't have water, so they kind of got a lot of attention this week for me. And I believe that's it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Move on to approval of the minutes for our September 2nd meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd if there's no discussion.
Motion on a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Let's move us into the consent agenda for this evening. We have the check register from August 28th through September 10th and the McConnell Foundation NOI submission to CAL OES.
Which is what Juliana was just talking about.
Great, great news that even though we didn't get the first round, which is disappointing.
We have a chance.
Thank you so much, Linda, and everyone involved.
Motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda items A and B.
Adopt.
Adopt. Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion on a second, any discussion of the motion at hand?
I always wondered what would happen if we didn't approve the check register. Would the staff have to go get all the checks back?
On the phone, give us your checks back.
Call the bank, bounce them.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries unanimously. Then we go to item nine, public hearing. We do not have any public hearing this evening. We do have holdover from the prior city council meeting in item 10, Old Business. We have the second reading of ordinance.
571.
571 Lot Design Standards, which we changed or proposed changing at the last meeting. We have Rico on this. Are there any clarifying questions? I have city planner on you. And I'm going to open it up to public comment at this point. Our sister's just changing some of the lot design standards. I must say, to do with the ratio of width to depth, we want to allow it in our city. And we were ordinarily restricted, we're making it more normal stuff. If anyone has any public comment, please come to the podium or hit the raise your hand button. You'll be allowed three minutes to comment on our ordinance 571. There's no further public comment, I'll close public comment.
It's a pretty straightforward amendments to the code. It makes it a little bit more flexible for people with abnormal lots. This also would not impact anyone who has a already constructed lot.
Yep.
So.
I think we had good consensus around it last meeting.
Are we ready for a motion?
A motion, unless anyone has any further discussion.
I moved it. Okay.
Is Rico on?
Yeah.
I am, hi, sorry, I couldn't get my, I forgot that I was muted on the Zoom as well. I apologize.
This is sort of tangential, Planner Tinsman, but what is the crossover? I think this allows greater utilization of lots in Dunsmere, but as the state is pushing for higher density residential, does this have much to do with somebody proposing, you know, eight apartments on a small lot? Or does it just have to do with flexibility for lot sizes?
It's really just for flexibility for reconfiguring lots in the city at present. That's largely where this comes in. There's already flexibility built in for when we're approving new lots. It's just that what we found is that there was, there was some language that was included in Title 16 that wasn't necessarily in Title 16 for one. It was redundant with Title 17. And Title 17, you can amend your standards through variances. The issue is with Title 16, you're really locked in at the map stage per our code. So that was really limiting. And then as well, sort of the standards that were in there, as far as no lot being wider than it is deep, was really, it's really, I've never seen anything like that. It really is very restrictive. It's designed for a city that is laid out in a perfect grid and is perfectly flat and you want everything to be uniform. I don't think it was appropriate for us.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion?
090, to provide greater flexibility in the lot design standards and reduce the number of non-conforming lots.
What he said.
Second.
And a second. So we want to waive the second and adopt ordinance 571.
Correct, and then adopt ordinance 571.
And adopt ordinance 571.
Amending section 1620090.
16290, what?
1620090.
Like I said, what he said.
Next time, I'll make sure you have a staff, a brief council memo with a recommended motion for a second reading.
Thank you.
Do we have a second of Councilman Kasse's motion?
Councilmember Harch had it.
All right, okay. All right, any further discussion of the motion at hand?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you for your work on this.
Yes.
Pleasure, thank you all.
Well said, Mr. Kasse.
This brings us to item 11, New Business. Item A, Authorization to Seek Interim City Manager and Negotiate Contract with Perspective Interim City Manager. Todd?
Sure, so there have been discussions about what route to take to pull on interim, to allow for some overlap while I'm still in the chair. And, you know, one of the people that has risen to the top is somebody that interviewed for the city manager position, a gentleman named Jefferson Spencer, who has experience as a, you know, plant director in a couple locations. You know, I, you know, I was asked to reach out to him to see if he was available. Yeah, you know, I know that Juliana has spent some time speaking to him and Matthew made a call to him. And he happens to be starting a three-week vacation and can be here as soon as October 1st. If this is the route that you would like to go, and since he's available, his background in planning, I think, would allow him to do a pretty good job in keeping a lot of the balls in the air that we have right now, we have up in the air right now. And to expedite getting somebody in here, if this is who you want to choose, what I would suggest is dusting off our interim city manager contract with Randy Johnson and then putting this, you know, negotiate salary, but putting this in front of Mr. Spencer with, you know, with input and kind of partnership with Mayor Bryant to get this in place. If this is the route, again, that you want to take, to see if we can get him up by October 1st and get that one month overlap.
Todd, if I might interject here, the reason why the authority is being requested to have the city manager enacted is I believe we have to have a regular meeting in order to hire a interim, which would put us after October 1st. But of course, if we feel like it's better to slow down, consider the other options. Maybe waiting for the next regular meeting perhaps, but this is brought up, I think, to council for discussion.
Some of the other, just really quick, the other options that we have available is we can request a list of potential city managers from the League of California Cities, contact them to see if they would like to be interim. Mount Chastity just went through this process and did not have success using that method. I'm not sure how we would fare now. We did talk to Randy, Randy Johnson is not interested at this point. Mark Brannigan is not interested, he's a full-time city manager in Lakeport. And a couple of other options, I mean, again, we could also fly the position as an interim and basically go through a hiring process. That's the other option as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for reference here, J.D. Spencer was our second choice. We had whittled down, when we hired Todd, we had whittled it down to two candidates and he was the other candidate that we had found to be qualified, just to kind of put that information out.
We have, we have had special meetings in the past to acquire city managers. We've done it twice that I know of.
Yeah, John Kenny and I talked about this. He said that legally, we will have to approve a, so we can have this discussion. We could have a special meeting where we interview someone. We can have a special meeting where we discuss it. But he said, to award a contract for a city manager or interim, it has to be done in a regular meeting.
Makes sense.
Yeah, which is why we're considering giving the authority to the city manager.
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's beneficial to us.
You know, yeah, why don't we open, there's no more clarifying questions, this is the staff report. Let's open this up to public comment because I'm very interested in hearing from members of the public if they're interested in commenting on this. Members of the public, if you guys would like to come up for any public comment, you'll be allowed three minutes, either come to the podium or hit the raise your hand button.
Hello, I'm Dwight Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. I had the pleasure today to talk with ex-city manager John Duckett from the city of Shasta Lake, now retired. I told him our dilemma, I told him it was probably going to be announced tonight that we were going to be looking for a member like that. He did state that it's extremely hard right now in small cities to hire city managers because of that. He's going to a meeting in the very near future with many city managers from many cities as a retired individual. He's going to talk to them, announce that we are looking for it, and maybe that would be a source to look at. So I think if you're interested in that, I could give you John Duckett's number. Maybe you can speak with him one-on-one or possibly find out how soon that would be. But that's something that I did in the interim today to find out. John Duckett, I've known John Duckett for 20 years, he's a stand-up guy. His wife, Dawn Duckett, happened to work with my wife. She took over the DA's office, managing the DA's office in Shasta County after my wife left. So he's a qualified individual to talk to if nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Appreciate it. All right, any further public comments? Seen none, I'll close this item for public comment and open it up for council discussion.
I guess I'll just throw it out there, again, this would be only interim. We are not on the hook to hire someone who is interim if they serve and they understand that when they sign on. I'll be at least outright and say that I told Todd about considering Jefferson to see if he would be interested, just because we have interviewed him. Everyone on this council was available for that. That being said, I'm very open to whatever the council would like to do. I'm not sold on one individual person. Really, my thought process, since Todd announced to us that he'll be leaving us, has really just been tactical in terms of keeping our projects going. I am in favor of getting someone into the interim role sooner rather than later just because I want them to have overlap with Todd to make sure that our projects that we have going on, butterfly, moss spray, you know, keeping everything moving forward in a good pace. So that's just my perspective and why I had recommended reaching out to Jefferson to see if he was interested. And that's just my two cents on the matter, but I'm very open to other options if people are.
Thank you, Councilman Kasse. Councilman Doherty?
I had talked with Ken Palphini from Weed, Weed City Council, and he mentioned a name of somebody that has in the past done interim, but apparently he's more interested in helping recruiting, but his name is, and you may know him, Jeff Butzla?
Butzla.
Butzla.
Yeah.
So Ken recommended we at least consider him in the overall conversation, unnecessarily to be hired or not necessarily even to be the interim, but perhaps to help us with recruiting, and I just wanted to throw his name into the mix then.
Yeah, and yeah, we can definitely, I think the bigger thing is, this isn't a discussion about recruiting. That'll probably be at our next meeting is to talk about, you know, do we want to go the ad hoc route again? That'll come at a larger discussion. This was really just the, from my perspective, that I requested on the agenda, just as a, trying to get someone in that interim role to keep us moving forward because I wasn't sure how long we would have Todd, you know. And I think at this point, we might be able to get a good month with him still. So it's just trying to find someone to keep that gap. Because at this point, I think typically for a city manager, a full-time permanent position, I mean, what, it took us about four or five months, just the two of us. But I think it's an even harder market right now. So I mean, we could be looking at needing an interim for about six to eight months is logical at this point. So if we're looking at that, I would like to get someone interim in.
Well, I guess that's, pose this question to council, is everyone more or less in favor of pursuing the interim route? As opposed to enacting?
We've got 20 yards in the fire, we have to. We've got twenty yards in the fire, we have to.
Yeah, I think in terms of-
We can resort to enacting if we had to, but you know-
I wouldn't want to put that on, on you. Yeah, I think that was, I think assigning someone acting city manager within the current staff is just, I didn't go to that right away just because of the current workload that we're already handling.
I totally agree, that was, that was a joke.
Lot of fun.
But we do appreciate that all the staff is going to stepping up considerably in this transition.
Yeah.
Institutional knowledge and memory is with you guys, not the interim or new city manager.
I propose that we direct staff to, or, and/or whoever else like Juliana, to reach out to anybody that might be interested and bring it back to the next council meeting, which makes sense since this J.D. Spencer won't be available for a while, it gives us at least another go-around.
Yeah, we can discuss that, my first instincts personally were to try to slow this down, have council members involved, weigh all of our options. I made a number of calls to potential candidates or people I could think of in the last week. It certainly is very convenient that Mr. Spencer is available to come here right away and begin the process of an apprenticeship. So what we're really considering here is whether we want, you know, I think all of our instincts is for us to get involved. It's very serious who we pick to run the city, or whether we want to take advantage of, you know, maximum continuity here with Mr. Spencer, as I frame it that way.
I think for this particular, I'm comfortable with that dude because he was pretty much our second choice from the top. He came and visited us at a time. He, he, you know, he made us feel, I had a good feeling about him then, but we all had a better feel about Todd. So it ain't like, you know, and, and I, I'm, I'm grateful that he's available to us.
Yeah, yeah, let's just put it this way, Matthew, just to make it as, as clear as it can be, we had a second person, why don't we bring him in since we've already interviewed him, we've already got good feelings about him, we've gone through that process. So if he is available, the only problem I would see, to be honest, is if it turns out that we end up wanting to hire somebody full-time and it not be him.
Yeah, I, I think that needs to be clear to him, again, I can work with Todd on helping create these expectations when we talk to him, it's that he needs to focus on being interim city manager. That'll be way more favorable if he does apply for the job. I do believe he is interested in the job at full-time. But I do insist, my own perspective at least, is the council needs to do a robust search for the best candidate. And it may very well be Mr. Spencer later on down the road, but it very well could be some other individual and we really need to keep all of our options open.
We need to be fair to Mr. Spencer, let him know that from the get-go.
Yes.
I can add something to this, in speaking to him, that was made abundantly clear that it's, if we go the route, it would be interim, and you may not be chosen for the role, but it's your opportunity to shine. But what he gets out of this, if he isn't chosen, is the fact that since he's trying to break into city management, what it does is allows him to put interim city manager on his resume, which gets him that much closer to finding his job.
You all cool with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think last time we took a chance, relatively speaking, Todd, on someone who didn't have city manager experience, it's always a question mark. But I think he'll pan out quite nicely, and he's, in my own conversation with him, he was very, very eager to be here in Dunsmere, to work for the community. He's appreciative of even being here for four or five months, he loves our area.
Really? Okay.
I say let's go with it, I don't know how to move it forward, I say let's go.
Well, Mr. Mayor, are you planning for the sum of this exercise to have a committee? As we, I happen to think this is one of the finest jobs any city manager could hope for, that we're much better off two years down the road than we were. So I very much favor a more extensive search than we did the last time. And I think we ought to work with the League of California Cities. I would, I, I have to confess, I didn't keep my peepers from the last executive search. So if someone could provide me-
I can send you a copy, in fact, I can send-
With Mr. Spencer's resume and a letter of interest. No, a new, a new letter of interest.
He sent me a new resume as well.
Okay, well, you got it then.
So if we could circulate that, and I, you know, I'm happy to go along with whatever the majority wants. I just want to make sure we get out how attractive a position it is. We may have to have some flexibility on salary and benefits. Obviously, we're looking for more longevity than we got the last time around because the revolving door is not helpful.
And I talked to, and, and again, this is a bigger conversation for our next meeting when we actually talk about putting something together. But I did talk to John Kenny about longevity and there are some options that we can consider for a final contract. I'm, I'm comfortable making the motion to allow the city manager to begin negotiation with Jefferson Spencer for the role of interim city manager and to bring the contract back at our next available regular meeting.
Second, I want to second that, Mr. Kaiser.
Go ahead, first.
Thanks, I second that.
So I think the big thing with the motion is that this is not an approval of a contract. If we do take a look at his current resume, we take a look at what his preferred contract will be, and that's not favorable to us, we can still say no to an interim contract.
I do think council needs to revisit this with details of the contract.
Correct, yes, that does need to come back to us. So, so again, if any of us do have any reservations between now and our next meeting?
I would just propose, because we've already kind of been working with our former current city manager, perhaps we form an ad hoc committee of myself and Councilwoman Casey to work with city manager on this, on the city manager position.
Well, I think we'll talk about that at the next meeting with the assignment of an ad hoc and talk about some, some couple of options there too.
But in terms of, it doesn't work well for everybody to be calling everybody. So we need structure here.
Yeah.
So please share that resume and the new letter of interest.
I didn't have any letter of interest, but I'll ask you for them.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, and then, like I said, I think the next meeting will have an item about recruitment where we can discuss ad hoc, we can discuss a couple of other options, just for information's sake. I did ask city manager Yu Haas for information on a recruiter, so he does have some information for us to consider as well, so.
I feel good about our next step here, so.
Okay, good, because I'm nervous.
Julianne, Julianne and I have had some conversations over this period of time.
Yeah, I, I think that this is going to give us good stability to conduct a more extensive search.
And to be clear, that is the whole idea, I mean, what we're doing right now is one step, but the second step can be long and, and with all due diligence and everything, we want you to get the best candidate, this I think is perfect for it.
And that's the only reason to move quickly now is to give ourselves the time for the fall.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, let's call the vote on that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Against, motion carries unanimously. And Juliana, if you could get with Wendy on the exact words of your motion.
Can do.
All right, and I'd also like to keep in mind what Mr. Bailey had said about that fellow that's going to be there.
Yes, if you could give me the number if you're here at the end or reach out to me.
I think what he's talking about is the ICMA conference and Todd's going to be there as well.
Oh, Todd will be there too, that's right.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, as many people as possible would be great.
Yeah, but that's a no spot.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, move ourselves forward into item B, Union Pacific Safety Workshop Communications.
I was under the impression there was going to be somebody here to talk to us.
So, Union Pacific, things don't work that quickly. So what I would say is, this, I took this as kind of twofold. One is with the derailment at the Cantera Loop again and the misinformation we received from Union Pacific that it was one car here, and after the fact, it's one getting somebody out here to talk about what's next because we have eighteen cars that are lined up along Old Stagecoach Road. So what I do, will do, and backing up here, we also have another concurrent program where Union Pacific is going to be doing remediation at the Union Pacific Yards and, you know, at the Public Works, doing a lot of borings and putting basically a blanket into the river that is, is ionically charged that will pull any seepage of any oil and absorb it while they're excavating, you know, the sites where they show contamination. And so I got a contact and met with this person from UP, a senior manager that will be in charge of the cleanup for the UP side, and asked her to come in October to counsel with Fish and Wildlife to talk about what the plans are for the site, what is the, the timeline, what kind of trucks will be hauling away material, what, you know, what happens if they find, you know, a lot of material will be hauled off by boxcar. And this person is probably the most responsive and reasonable person that I've dealt with. They've agreed to come in October, she's just going to give me a date. On the derailment itself, she sent a video that our own Wendy Perkins took of, of the wrecked cars laid on, out on along Old Stagecoach, and that was sent along to the Public Affairs Department, I have not heard from them and I've got a call into them, I need to follow up and would like to get them down here because the, the communications and follow-up after the fact has been atrocious, in my opinion. So I'm still working on that piece.
All right. Thank you, so it's kind of still up in the air when they will be able to attend to us.
So for the-
Are we tabling this?
I think it's just an update.
Just an update?
Yard, we'll get somebody here in October, somebody with a background in environmental engineering from UP, she's great, and get Fish and Wildlife out here, who's actually overseeing the entire project.
Okay, excellent.
Councilmember Arf had a question.
Well, I thank you for taking the initiative, Todd, this is a, I think it's an important issue to the community, the derailment, which comes twenty years after the disaster derailment, Mossbury Trails, which is a huge liability issue to the city and Union Pacific. I've had any number of citizens, mostly low-income citizens, that fish the river in the center of town. Is this fish safe to eat? Why are there so few fish in this stretch of the river? And so I'm hoping that we devote at least an hour agenda-wise, and I am hoping that we invite representatives from the offices of emergency service, both at the state level and at the county level. At the state level, we had a hearing about four years ago because the number of derails were going up. And what we know is the impacts on the narrow stretch of the headwaters are quick and large. So if there's another Cantera Loop incident, we will have very little time to react. If there are actually water quality problems in the center of our little city, we need to know and be able to say with confidence to the people that live here, A, it's going to get remediated, and either the water is safe and the wildlife is safe, or it isn't. But I, I think Union Pacific has been missing in action from the partnership I would like to see between the railroad and the city as we move forward. Obviously, the river is going to be under increasing stress with climate change, and we need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arf. As this is not an action item, I'm just going to ask if there's any further discussion.
You should probably open it for public comment.
By the way, that, I was just realizing, we really should have before each item, whether it's action or discussion, you know, or information only.
All right, well, I certainly can open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment on this, please do so now. I see none, I will now close the public comments. And then, yes, if there's any further questions or discussion. All right, I see none, let's move to item C, support for vulnerable households utility rate relief discussion.
All right, thank you. So I provided a brief memo in the packets on page seventeen and eighteen at the end of just an initial discussion on, you know, how we want to move forward with vulnerable household assistance. This kind of came about with the discussion of lifeline rates, which they don't like to use the term lifeline rate per se for a lot of this. I did do some research and I found the court cases and information that prevent us from using the Prop two eighteen structure to provide different rates for different individuals. There is an exception that electric utilities, because of a PUC rule, CPUC ruling, does allow lifeline rates, but unfortunately, under the Prop two eighteen for cities, counties, and other utility districts, we're not able to do that. That being said, there are other assistance programs throughout the state of California that do work out fairly well. I did kind of outline a couple of different utility rate assistance mechanisms in, in the memo, and just to summarize it, cities that have, cities, counties, and utility districts that have assistance have a number of different ways of, of collecting revenue for those programs, one of which is the use of surcharges on utility accounts. So when people have overages or forget to pay their bill or things like that, those can be repurposed to a, a assistance program for those utility payers.
Question, on that one point though, we're not saying that we're going to add something to try and increase the amount of surcharge revenue, it's just that they exist and we would take advantage of it? Or are you saying that would be a strategy?
It is a, it is a strategy that some cities use. There are a couple utility districts, and I've talked to John Kenny briefly. He did work on, he did work on a utility surcharge program in the city of Reading that they have a certain percentage that they charge to each account. I'm not sure the legal mechanisms and how that moves forward. Like I said, this was just a preliminary discussion because there's a lot of different avenues we can choose. So I didn't want to get too far down the rabbit hole on one option, but-
The, the Lake Bees, the city of Dunsmere, I believe, has not charged Lake Bees for well over a year since the pandemic.
Yeah, and I did put in there the pros and cons of, of the different mechanisms that people use, the two main ones. You know, the, the pro of the surcharge is that it really isn't putting a ton of impact on individual taxpayers or ratepayers, but the con, there's, there's quite a few cons to doing a surcharge because in most cases, people who are encouraged, who are incurring the surcharge are typically low-income households because they can't afford to pay their bill on time or having difficulties there. So it's not an assistance mechanism that's typically used, and there are some kind of legal nuances to it. Like I said, there are a couple of different areas that charge a percentage to each ratepayer, that's just like a flat percentage, I'm not sure, again, the legal mechanism of that. John Kenny attempted to start telling me the math and how that's all done, and I just kind of went, I'm not going to get into that right now because it's not very clear how it's specifically done for the city of Reading. The other option is, and this is more commonly used, which is a special tax assessment. It could either be a property assessment in some, in some cities' cases, or it could be like the TUT that we have now. The city of Napa does a TOT, so they do actually put it on their visitors, basically, so the hotel tax, a certain percentage of that is done as a special tax that goes into in assistance funds for rental payments and utility assistance. Which brings me to the other big thing is, if we do move forward with a, a program like this, do we want to just keep it to utility ratepayers and utility assistance? A lot of these programs, if they do the special tax assessment, either through property or the sales tax, a lot of other cities partner it with other programs, including food assistance and housing assistance.
Great Northern? Yeah, I wanted to mention Great Northern, they do a good prototype, but that's more-
Yeah, so a, a lot of cities do it a couple of different ways. Some have specific departments and individuals who administer these programs. Some do third-party management, so like Great Northern, we would basically have to go out to a bid and have people do that, depending on how we want to structure, how this works. So there's a lot of different ways we could do that. I think really for today, it's getting a feel of, do we want to just focus on utility ratepayers? Do we want this expanded to be for a, a variety of different types of things that vulnerable households have difficulty affording, like food and housing assistance? Some cities use any excess to also do low-income housing projects and argue that it is an assistance-type program. So there's a lot of different things that people do that we can move forward with if we want to go different avenues. that people do that we can move forward with if we want to go different avenues. The other thing is, is as we move forward, defining who the eligible applicant would be. So some cities and utility districts focus on giving relief primarily to people 65 years and older. There was one city that I was looking at in central California, Southern California, that automatically enrolls anyone who's 65 years or older into the assistance program, and you can opt out if you do not want. There's no income level. So you just automatically, you hit 65, you get the, basically, the senior rate, if you are okay with the word senior. I apologize. So there are, there are some that do that. Some of them also have their own definition of what low income means. And I gave a couple of different instances of, some cities do livable wage, so they adjust low income for their circumstance in their city. For example, $900 gets you a lot more in Siskiyou County than it would in the Bay Area. And so some of these utility districts or some of these cities and counties factor that in, so that instead of saying low income based on the national or state levels, they do a calculation for what would be livable in the area itself. So there's a lot of different ways that we could do this, and I wanted to get some more information from the council in terms of what we're thinking. Do we want to make this a larger program than utilities? Do we want to investigate special tax or surcharge program? And we can look into all of them if that's what you want. I just wanted to get a better feel before I dove more into this, because it can get pretty complex in terms of program management and calculations for the mechanism.
Thank you so much for this thorough research and report. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and we can continue the discussion. Does anyone would like to make a public comment on this item? Please either go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button or come to the podium.
Again, this is on lifeline, an idea for lifeline issue. Thank you.
I see none. I'll close the public comment window for this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? What I'd like to make about extending, just to throw in the discussion, is, is the money that we're right now taking with our TUT and passing on to the Resource Center is essentially doing that other component. And if we were to come up with a different revenue stream that could support the larger picture, we could then turn around also and pass that over to there. I just wanted to say that I think the real challenge right now, more than anything else, is is coming up with the lifeline for the utilities. So that's what I'd like to focus on personally.
Yeah, that's good. I feel fairly strongly that we have a real predicament when it comes to administering the eligibility side. And I don't quite know how to get around that one yet. I think before we go anything further on, they might relate to what route we take. But our city staff, in my observation, absolutely could not handle, you know, verification of income, et cetera. There are state agencies that work full-time around the clock in county that can barely keep up with that. Fraud is rampant. Not that I expect fraud to be the main thing, but just a properly administered program is, I think it's beyond the scope of what our office could just immediately start doing. And even if they did it well, say initially, and registered, I think that was so good that you included that in the end. But I'm curious to hear thoughts on how we could reasonably deal with the administration. So I would lean towards trying to find a partnership with a nonprofit that already does this maybe, and seeing if we could maybe work with them. And at the bare minimum, I think, looking for grants, I think we owe it to everyone to be willing to participate in that, that search. But I don't know if we really have the capacity to be lead on it, at least at this point.
So what are you saying, like bring Great Northern in on?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I know that they already, for utility rates, I think it's electricity, have all sorts of programs. And, you know, every opportunity I can, I tell people, more people are eligible than you really know for weatherization and utility subsidies. But again, it's, it's not that, you know, I think the fundamentals were, we were trying to see if we could charge different rates and make an adjustment. It sounds like the answer is no. We can't do where we even it all out and come up with a system. We have to keep rates the same. So it falls on us to find organizations, programs, grants, or if we could find a permanent funding source within our own city.
And still stick within our legal guidelines.
Yeah. If we could do that, we could provide subsidies at least some of the time. So I'd say either the Community Resource Center, Great Northern. But, you know, I think ultimately we're going to have to look for nonprofit donations and grants.
Well, it'd also have to be somebody that does have access to the resources to be able to determine eligibility, like you were saying. So
There's a lot of forms, information, and things already completed by other areas so that we could easily duplicate. It's just kind of the manpower to go in, accept that, you know, be trained in the confidentiality pieces of that, and be able to, to go through that process.
If you're involved in, we'll have contract or, you know, it includes
Well, with appreciation, I spent 35 years doing rate setting. And we'll take a fair amount of credit for the state's electric lifeline rates, because the state of California, the legislature, and the governor realized that electric rates were quickly becoming unaffordable, that electricity is a necessity to live. If you're in a trailer park with air conditioning, and Southern California Edison says your monthly bill to do the minimum in your inefficient trailer with inefficient air conditioning is going to be $400 a month, then what have you done? You've done nothing. So I would at first like to define the problem for particularly our residential customers. When you add up the typical monthly bill, where we combine three utility services, water, sewer, and garbage, is it affordable for the demographics of our community? If it isn't, then we need to do something. The genius behind the electric rates was, we essentially turned the rate structure upside down. It used to be that the more electricity you used, the cheaper it got. Now, with conservation, we need to use less electricity. The more you use, the more expensive it gets. That's called a conservation design, and it has nothing to do with how rich you are. It simply rewards conservation. And typically, low-income, small households don't use that much water, don't use that much sewage service, don't use that much garbage. So one way to go, now that we've set the electric rates, or excuse me, the water and sewer rates, would be to look at rates that reward conservation with lower rates and increase prices for higher usage. The other way is called a means-based test. Now you're administering a whole program where someone has to come and qualify, has to prove that they're poor, has to prove this and that. And we all have Pacific Power. Pacific Power has the care programs. If you want to write an extra check, then besides their conservation-based rates, they also will work with customers. It's on the utility. We don't have a Pacific. It's us. So I strongly favor spending some money on a consultant that would give all of this. I, you know, I have disagreed consistently with Prop 218 being a barrier to doing what the right thing is for our citizens. But it's not here for me to debate with Councilmember Lukeyezi because she's the only one that's taken any initiative on this. So I, I just feel very strongly for low-income ratepayers. They're trying to manage rent. They're trying to manage groceries, gasoline, and utilities. It's easy for us to say, well, you got to pay this. But if they can't pay it, we're not doing any good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it would be good to look at some of our actual data.
In terms of data for what?
Well, anecdotally, rates are too high. But I'd be very curious, especially taking the summation of electrical, no, electrical rates are very much lower than elsewhere in California.
Yeah. I think on a five-year basis, as I've said before, I think our sewer rates, if we don't change strategies, are going to be the most expensive in the county.
Yeah. I mean, data meaning, you know, we raise rates, and it's, we raise rates because the cost of doing business is going up exponentially. And there's been decades and decades with Dunsborough not raising rates and not replacing infrastructure. So we're, we have to, you know, we have an obligation to have rates that sustain our infrastructure.
One
We're all on board with that. But I am curious relative to the median income, how we fare, because any rate increase feels like too much for someone struggling. And I, I understand that. But it could be, I'm curious, because I've looked at other cities, not so close to here, in a different world, and their rates are off the chart higher than ours, way higher.
Well, it comes to a conversation, and this goes to the housing side as well. As you mentioned the word affordability, and what that means for the individual person is going to be drastically different between each person. You know, me spending $300 on two additional Christmas trees is not a huge deal. $300 for someone else is
Their whole Christmas.
Their whole Christmas. You know, so that's, that's a bigger thing. And that's why I talk about, you know, at the end, you know, defining who we're really trying to get at. You know, are we looking at this from a standard state or federal low-income level? Are we looking at the livable wage of what is a little bit more realistic to what it is here? You know, I, I think that's going to be a bigger conversation as we move forward, what that means to each of us and what we're trying to achieve. Because again, we can go around in circles and say, we're really not that bad compared to someone else. But it's, again, not getting to the issue of, you know, affordability for our small, you know, once, once you're in your individual household, you know, it's, it becomes a bigger issue.
Yeah. And data by percentage of household income, you know,
Yeah.
Rates relative to median household income would be one.
Well, the thing I wanted to bring up is that it just dawned on me that one of the most basic, relevant data sources would be to look at the record of the number of people who are late and had to be turned off. And without identifying any individual ratepayer, we could come up with some sort of analysis to determine what the problem looks like.
Yeah. I think it's going to be tough with the last year and a half with COVID because it basically causes
Oh, we can take the year before that. You know, I'm just saying
Yeah, we'd have to look at several years.
See how many people on a regular month are late. And that would give us a sense of what the problem is.
Yeah, it would. But we'd have to allow, people are sometimes late for reasons other than, you know.
When I first moved into my, when I first moved into my house, my husband was supposed to be the one who paid the utility bill. And we were late three months in a row.
So
So, yeah.
And then other people could potentially have decent income, but not be paying for whatever reason.
Peter mentioned consultants. You guys think maybe that might be a good idea?
I mean, I can look. It's definitely a super specialized field. And we can look at, you know, what the options are, what that cost would look like.
And this is grass. We need somebody else to blow. We never walked through this grass.
Yeah. It's, it's a, it's not
Legally wise.
It's not a super fun topic to dig into.
But well, on that point, my experience is courts don't want to touch this.
Right.
Because judges are even worse than city council members. It's complex. It's been described as both an art and a science. Yes, you have to justify that you're not collecting more than the costs of the utility enterprise, but there's 15 ways to skin that can.
Well, and, and yeah, and then that goes into the whole, you know, that's a bigger discussion about if we want to go that route and, and do that.
I guess I'm going to add, it sounds like Councilman Art seemed to be in agreement with the difficulty of qualifying every individual's income as it fluctuates.
It's sort of demeaning, too.
Yeah, it can be very invasive.
It can. So
Well, like I said, there was one utility that basically said, once you hit 65 years, you get it. And if you don't want it, you can opt out of the program, which is similar to the cares, and just saying, you know, I don't need to give it to someone else. I mean, there's a, they, they base that on age. Again, if we do anything that is income-driven, there has to be a mechanism in there to make sure people are abiding by those rules.
And until we kind of clear up that, I would be somewhat reluctant to, unless the consultants have more information on that.
That's what I think. I think it's beneficial. It would be foolish to get a consultant.
Yeah.
All of us, all of us seem at this point to be in support of moving forward with exploration, if nothing else, right? Come back for another meeting?
Yeah. I think the bigger thing, too, to chew on as you go forward is, is what is the goal that we're trying to achieve? Are, are we really just trying to cover the bare minimum, you know, utility rate? Or are we trying to ultimately have these households succeed and get out of poverty? I mean, that's the bigger conversation of what ultimately do we want to do? You know, from my perspective, I tackle it as a well-being piece. I would like to do more than just utilities. I think with the demand for food assistance that occurred over COVID, you know, within our own community, there's a bigger issue of some of our most vulnerable residents not being able to, to have a good life, have, succeed in life more than just going from paycheck to paycheck. You know,
Well, I certainly support that. I mean, I wasn't trying to deny that. I was saying that it comes through another, another realm for us. But certainly food assistance, I agree with.
So where do we go with this?
I can dig into some other things and get us some options and look at some
Look at some options. But I do think
Get some consultants.
We are unfortunately entering a cycle where the unsatisfactory answer to everything's going to be, wait until we find our next permanent city manager. We'll dig into it then. When he or she takes their office on, it's going to be a certain number of months of catch-up. So I would just say have patience with this item.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to a, a couple people in terms of what a consultant would look like, and what that type of piece could be. Again, you know, focusing on 218 is a whole nother realm of consultants. And I do know a couple in terms of stormwater, which is like a whole other animal. So I, I'll look at a couple of options for us and reach out. I've got a couple that I've met with before, years back. Yeah. And then we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
I mean, I guess the other card is, are we going to get a public works director? If we get a qualified public works director, that would be a perfect partner
It would help.
For this enterprise.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, Senator, do we have any update on?
Yeah. You know, this is not focused, supposed to be focused on our one, speaking to, but, you know, my hesitancy in posting is to make sure that he was satisfied with the insurance that, you know, that we're providing. I sent him a copy of our Bible on what we offer. He's satisfied with it. So I'm going to post that position on Friday tomorrow.
Excellent.
And it is open for other people to apply.
Definitely encourage anyone who meets the qualifications to apply.
And thank you to Councilmember Lukeyezi.
Once again, a stellar performance, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm getting there. Sorry, I couldn't give you more. I just didn't want to
You could write a book.
You could, you could get, literally, people are getting their PhDs on the legal pieces of utility rates. And I don't want to be on that level. So, yeah.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Trash.
The next item.
All right.
Being as I put it on there, and being that
I can answer your question, though.
My person that was supposed to be talking Diana from Clemens, and the fact that I was busy this weekend, I was unable to bring
No, I did this one. I did it.
All right. All right, sir. Come on, man. Let's do it.
Okay. Todd, do you want to go? Or do you want me to just?
Sure. Go ahead. It's, it's in our city code. It's under 8.08.080 refuse containers. And there's a section
I can forward you the email with the exact reference.
Yeah. And it's basically what it comes down to is, it's the duty of every person to keep their refuse receptacles in a clean and sanitary condition. And so what I would propose is that when we have a situation where we've got repeat offenders with trash all over the street, that if you see it, take a photo of it, send it to City Hall, and we'll send code enforcement out.
I have a question on this.
Yes.
Moving forward with the Solid Waste Committee, one of the things that I've really been intrigued by is the idea of finding a way for those areas where we know there's a bear encampment, like where I used to live over on Siskiyou Avenue where Dave lives now, where apparently now Clemens does have the, the capacity to be able to deal with bear-proof containers. now Clemmons does have the capacity to be able to deal with bear-proof containers. If we could find a way where we know that people are having this problem, maybe we could work a way to get a bear-controlled, you know, container there. I'm just thinking this is an opportunity, and I'm hoping we could solve it because we're always going to have trash on the street otherwise.
So.
There's also another, there's a couple little things that you can get locally at the hardware store and put on your trash cans.
That's right.
So that on trash day, even Diana said, I don't mind unclipping that, getting out of my truck and unclipping that, and dumping your trash rather than getting out of my truck and having to pick up the trash. That's what the demonstration was about. I will bring that future to show somebody that it's so simple. Maybe I'll just do a Facebook thing. But the items are available at the hardware store. There's people around that can even install them if need be. But when the kids are walking to school and they're having a step to trash spewed all over the streets, and the person comes out of his car and gets in his truck and goes to work without picking up his trash, that pissed me off. That's why I brought this to council. Plus, I've got a lot of other neighbors that are the same way. Some people just don't want to pick up their trash. They're leaving it for the trash people, and it ain't right. So I appreciate the fact that council brought this up. Appreciate-
Yep.
The homework that you guys did. And I heard that code enforcement could be pursuing this, so.
So I'll send this to you, but these are all the highlighted sections in terms of it's already in our code. And then I also gave a couple of different options. The other thing that we could do is, other cities charge a surcharge. So if Diana and Clemmons do have to get out and pick up, you can actually put that on to their bill for the next month and say, every time they have to do that, it could be a surcharge.
She's going to start keeping records, too.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. That can be something that we bring-
You trash talkers can talk that.
Yeah, we can talk about it at the ad hoc, because we do have to do some amendments to our garbage ordinance in terms of a couple of other things. So that can be a bigger conversation if we wanted to move the surcharge avenue. But again, I think in terms of getting compliance, I think definitely giving people a notification of, we do have bear-proof bins. Please go get them. There are no additional costs, to my understanding.
Let's keep our town clean.
Yeah, and it does happen every once in a while. So there's, you know, people, in terms of code enforcement, our avenue that we go by is you get notified first. So you're not just going to immediately get a ticket, but you're going, you're going to get, you know, a warning. And then we'll proceed to do that if it continues to happen. Because it happens. We live in bear country. So we want to have some forgiveness.
I know what happens, ma'am.
I want to, I want to make sure that we give some forgiveness where things happen.
Mayor Bryan, Diana, I think, is on, and she has her hand up.
Hi, Diana.
There we go. Hello. Just to correct something that Juliana said, at this point, we do not have free bear-proof dumps, bear-proof cans. Mostly, people have been getting their own, and that's fine. They're, we're able to work with those. But the bears, I sent a picture to Councilman Kaisler, and the bear tore up that bear-proof can. So, I mean, and we don't mind, we don't mind helping clean some of it up. But when it's like Dave said, when you're at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00, 8:30, and people are mulling about on their property or getting out to leave, and they see it, and they just look at you as you pull up and then pull away, that's kind of where it's getting ridiculous. But, I mean, we're, we're here to help keep the town clean, too. And we're trying to do a little more and put a little more effort into, you know, we realize that we start early, too, to try to get away from being in traffic when kids are going to school and whatnot. So during those times, it's important for us to do our part also.
You know, Diana, I appreciate you, like I told you, I'd bring this up, and I put it out there. But I appreciate the fact that you do get out of that truck, and you do pick up all that trash. And I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
We don't pick it all up, but we try to get the big parts up. And the other thing is, I have handed out a couple of different samples, and I have some more that I've been waiting for. Unfortunately, the supply right now is far outweighing the demand, or the demand is far outweighing the supply right now. And so we're just not getting samples of things that we need. We're not, our cans that we ordered in June, we're still out November to December, possibly January. They're quoting us 22 to 24 weeks out. So we're in the process of trying to get something. Just like a truck, we, right now, every truck we call on, they're, they're already spoken for. So we're looking at November, December. It's just been insane. But I'm, at the next ad hoc committee, we'll definitely talk about this some more and try to get some stuff figured out. So we can help keep the town cleaner than it is. And I have been in talks with Mark. We do communicate on a regular basis when there are issues.
That's good.
All right. Thank you, Diana.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
And thank everybody for getting on board with this, you know. It's our town.
Yep.
I'll do a public comment on this one.
Sure, yeah. Open up a public comment.
Here she is. She's the public. She represents the public. She's the mouth of the public.
I've done an article on exactly this because we have such a bad problem in McLeod. And basically, there's two people that live on my alley that are notorious for leaving trash out during the week, and there's always trash out there. And notifying the public of ammonia-soaked sponge in their trash as a deterrent, you know, food waste, freeze it until trash morning, not the night before, because the bears are trained in McLeod. There's a whole list of things that I wrote in this article, of things that they can do. Our, our public works guy, they charge $42 an hour. If a neighbor calls in and says, you know, so-and-so's trash is out, if they come and pick it up, they charge $42 an hour to pick it up.
Yeah.
And that has been the best deterrent, is when there's money behind it.
Shereen, can you give your name real quick?
What?
Can you give your name so that people-
Oh, Shereen Strauss. And I live in McLeod.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, sorry. We're in public comment.
Is there any further public comment?
Again, Dwight Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. I brought this up some months ago, that I think is very important, that some of the techniques that people are using against the bears are against the law. I, for one, had my animal have a three, a large number, largest lure you can get, wrapped with a solution that bears would be entitled to, attached to a trash can. The ballast was down my dog's throat. I was praising the Lord, and I was able to reach in knowing that I was going to have to back the hooks out. Ironically, the device was wrapped in such a way that the barbs never lodged in my dog. They were actually meant to go further into the bear's intestine before he ate that.
Did you report that to the sheriffs?
I did not at the time. The only thing I've done is I'd public comment, parried once before. But all I'm asking is if the trash people find illegal devices of that, that does need to be reported. I do not know which trash can my dog got from, but it could have cost me thousands of dollars.
She's got her hands, sure. Is there any further public comment on this item?
Looks like Diana has her hand up again.
Diana?
And just to respond to Mr. Bailey, we definitely will take pictures and report that to Mark, and make sure that that is dealt with if we ever see something like that. I personally haven't. But, and we do take pictures of plenty of things now, so that'll be one that we will add.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to close public comment on this item. Is there any further discussion this time?
Your dog's okay, right?
Yeah.
Because I'm pissed.
All right, thank you. So that brings us into item 12, future agenda items. Of course, we'll be getting the full interim city manager contract back at the next meeting, and possibly with introduction of the interim city manager. I also have been working with Todd. Prior to his departure, we were looking into doing an update, either in closed or open session, depending on what seems most appropriate to John Kenny, on the vacant and distressed building ordinance. So that will be coming out in the next two meetings.
Okay, good, good.
Yes, Councilman Art.
That knocks me down to a single item.
It's almost like we know.
And then the other one would be-
Okay, what is it?
I would also like to ask if the finance committee, time allowing, just in the near future, if they could work on what a sustainable manager salary would be. Because I know we might end up with this discussion with particular people in mind and options. But I think it'd be nice to have a non-biased approach. What is actually sustainable?
No, yeah, we can, I'll talk to Blake about that.
And then the second thing is, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse for three years on this, but if we could, as an exercise in finance committee, take the percentage increase in our law enforcement contract last time round, and calculate out what that same percentage increase would look this time round, and how that affects our finances, particularly because we have that one-year budgeted already.
I mean, I think that's something you and I should probably email on, because I don't have any idea what you're asking for. So please give me more information.
I think it'd be a useful exercise before we hear the sun, perhaps in April, to realize that this expense is coming. And it might not be as bad as we think, but we need to factor it into our long-term plan.
Okay.
About now, you know.
Okay.
Okay, cool. That's all for me.
Councilmember Art.
So I, just to follow up on Blake's report on the two microenterprise loan programs, if the staff could, over the next month or so, put together a one- or two-pager, I actually have a fair number of people calling me saying, do you have space? I want to start a small business. And they need support, you know, they're little entrepreneurs. So if Blake could work with Quentin and either put it on the city website, or website plus a handout, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other items for future agenda consideration?
I do, but I'm going to wait.
All right. Wonderful meeting. There are motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dave, you've got two 20 minutes to get your pizza.
Go, Dave, go.
I'm going to order pizza, especially with this. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Bailey? I'm glad to talk to you, King Sir.